Good afternoon, ICWELCM. We'll call the meeting to order for the Strategic Directions Committee for June the 11th, 2025. The southeastern part of Vancouver Island, the Gulf Islands, and the Lower Fraser Valley are their traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. For thousands of years, the Coast Salish people have lived in, traveled, and fished the waterways of the Salish Sea. The Hulka Minam language is the language of this land. Hulka Minam traditionally, and to this day, unites the Snanawas, Snanemo, and the Saminas peoples as one family and on whose territories we stand today. We also give thanks to the ancestors, predatory leaders, matriarchs, and creatures, big and small, for looking after the rich resources and cultural teachings of this land. Okay, we'll move on to number two, three, four, and five. If we don't have any additions to the agenda, deletions to the agenda, change in order, I'll seek an approval of the agenda motion. I see it moved by Greg. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Chantel. Anyone's opposed to the agenda as presented and circulated, please say so in the chat, otherwise we'll consider it approved. Seeing none, I call that motion approved, and we'll move on to number six, approval of the minutes, that the minutes of the Strategic Directions Committee meeting held on May 7th, 2025 be approved. Can I have a mover for that motion, please? Moved by Greg and seconded by Naomi. If anyone opposed to approving the minutes? Don't see any opposition to that, so we will consider that approved, and we'll move on to number seven presentations. We have two this evening. The first one will be presented by the NDTA Professional Development Committee Chair with a professional development report. Danielle, you're on the stage. Take it away if you're ready. Okay, Joe. You're muted.
Hi, sorry about that. I was having some issues, some issues with my computer. So Joe, just let me jump onto hers here. I'm sorry, I'll just get my.
Wonderful, sharing is caring.
Yes. I'll get my presentation. Oh no, now my presentation won't pull up on Joe's computer. Um, okay, I'm not too sure where to go with this because my presentation won't come up here. Sorry, just a moment.
In the meantime, if anyone has any music, we can sing along.
I'm just seeing that Chris said mentorship can go first while we get this figured out.
Sure, Chris, are you ready to go ahead?
Christina Rennenberg, the committee chair is, but I am also here to support her. So yes, we're ready to go.
Okay, so we'll move to 7.2 for now, mentorship report with Christina, the mentorship chair, and Chris, the issue, the NDTA Professional Issues Officer will also be here. So take it away, Christina. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen too, so bear with me for a minute here. Okay, if someone can just confirm they can see that, it would be really helpful.
All good, Christina.
Okay, awesome. Thanks so much. Good evening, everybody. I'm grateful to be here today. I am the current mentorship chair and also the chair for next year as well. And I just want to take a second to acknowledge all the mentors that are in the room today and the mentors that have impacted each of you along your journey. I'm a literacy coordinator as well as the mentorship chair. It's my first year in the role. And I just wanted to give some context and background for the roles I've had through my career to give, yeah, just to get some context. I'm, I have been a sponsored teacher for VIU, mentoring candidates for the last seven years. I'm a member of the BCTF Peer Support Services team, and we support teachers that are often in crisis, although they can self-refer. And as I mentioned, I am the current and next year's chair for the Mentorship Committee. And when I reflect on my own personal growth journey as an educator, I can't help but picture the mentors that have helped to guide me, push me, inspire me, to become a better educator, and these people have impacted my life by asking the right questions, listening intently, providing feedback, and not shying away from a brave conversation. And in other words, they've helped me to follow a path that allowed me to find my own value and to bring my skills forward, to contribute to my classroom when I was in that role, but also to support the larger educational community. And I am forever grateful for those mentors, for their time, for their patience, for their wisdom. And it's those positive experiences with mentorship and the impact they've had on my life that really drives my passion for continuing this work and help others access it. Our intention, Chris and I's intention in speaking with you today is just to share our excitement about the work the Mentorship Committee has been doing over the last three years. We share, we will share why mentorship matters, how the committee has evolved, and highlights from the year. And I will start exploring the four benefits that we see of mentorship. So we're going to look at teacher wellness, professional growth, student success, and leadership. So for teacher wellness, regular feedback and encouragement from a mentor can really build self-efficacy, helping teachers feel more capable and less overwhelmed. When teachers feel confident, productive, and effective, they feel fulfilled in the work that they do, and that's really important. And for professional growth, mentorship allows individuals, allows for individualized learning. As the mentor and mentee work together, they naturally ask questions and adjust their focus, and this transforms how teachers engage in professional learning, and it really is a catalyst for positive change. Growing as a professional becomes contagious, which is what we've seen with our committee work. The more people who engage in professional learning, the more it inspires those around them to do the same. And that ripple effect can impact entire school communities. In terms of student success, when teachers invest in building their instructional capabilities, students benefit. Mentorship fosters a growth mindset. When teachers feel safe, they take risks, they experiment, they improve, they bring more creative, engaging, and effective practices into the classroom, enhancing learning experience for all their students. And the last piece I wanted to chat about was just how mentorship provides learning or leadership opportunities for teachers. Behind every great leader, at the base of every great tale of success, you'll find an indispensable circle of trusted advisors, mentors, and colleagues. Meaning the more leaders we have, the more success stories will emerge. And Chris is just going to speak to year one of this three-year journey we're highlighting today. So Chris, can I pass it to you?
Thank you. Yep. So I would like to also throw it back to the wonderful work that happened for mentorship before the committee had started. There's many teachers before, and mentorship's something that is alive and well in the profession, as well as there has been a lot of focus leading up to our ability to create the committee and really ground ourselves in effective pedagogy as it goes for mentorship. So really, we, in the first year, we came together and figured out what directions we can take mentorship, where mentorship can go, and how, what were the challenging parts of accessing mentorship for the members? One of the things that we identified was the, the application process was not well-known, so we did some advocacy on that. And in the first year, we had a total of 52 memberships or mentorships. This, this year, I seem to remember that we were more heavy on the elementary-focused mentorships than the secondary mentorships. Christina, I think I hit all my notes.
Thanks. Thank you, Chris. So during our second year, there's a bit more of a formal committee created. So Chris kind of took the reins that first year, and then a few of us joined the committee to help support that work. And we looked critically at the forums we had and who could access mentorship, and we kind of revised and added these updates onto the NDTA website just to make it a little bit easier for teachers to access. And we really looked at the language we were using because the idea of who a mentor is has kind of changed and evolved. So we no longer felt that it was someone who was simply walking ahead of us, or sorry, someone who had walked ahead of us and was leading us down that similar path. And we believe that both the mentor and the mentee have kind of this invaluable perspective to bring, and it really is this walking alongside and discovering together. And another foundational shift we put into place was opening mentorship up for all teachers. So traditionally, it had been like, you know, teachers in early career, maybe the first four years, and that was kind of what most people thought when they were looking to access it. Well, I've been teaching for more than four years, so I'm not, no longer eligible. So we found that teachers of all level and experience were really interested in pushing their practice forward, and we wanted to make sure they knew they could access the service if they wanted to. Adults are learners too, and when we provide that foundation for them to collaborate, they do, they did so with, they do so and did so with enthusiasm. And the partnerships that were created included both high school and elementary. So that was a big shift kind of in that second year as more people were accessing it. And it tended to be just between colleagues within the same school, so teachers were having conversations maybe in the hallway. And hey, I would like to work with you on this. I know you do this. Can we collaborate together and apply for a mentorship? And so that was really all positive growth for us. And a team of us went to the TMBC Teacher Mentorship BC Conference, and that was a really eye-opening experience. We got to interact with often coordinators, mentorship coordinators in other districts, and people who were leading mentorship. And we got to see what, how they were able to get things rolling and the different programs they had available, and they kind of helped support us in next steps. So that was really a positive experience. And then I'll move into this year. So this year, we attended that same conference for a second time to continue learning from other districts. And we kind of have the beginning stages of an island mentorship coalition starting, which is really excited, so exciting. So we noticed there was different mentorship coordinators on the island, and it would be easier for us to maybe meet kind of in different communities closer together and kind of build this network together. And we're also all kind of in the beginning stages of developing this. So yeah, that, we'll see how that evolves next year. And this year, we continued to open up access points for teachers to to try to increase how many people were accessing mentorship. So last year, we had about 52, and this year, we got all the way up to 79. So we did see an increase of people accessing it. We did that by providing a table at the NDTA ProD so people could find our forums and see what the work we were doing through that avenue. And then also with literacy coordinators going into more schools this year, we were able to kind of see good practice happening. Here, people were looking for mentorship and help support those partnerships outside of just school, within a school mentorships. And this has resulted in more mentorships between teachers at different schools. And we are particularly excited about larger groups coming together for mentorship opportunities with one group facilitator. And these bigger group mentorships are really a network of support within schools for teachers. And these supportive relationships have the power to kind of ripple across staff rooms and to move across hallways. And we are really excited about this growth for the committee this year. And Chris, do you want to highlight some of the quotes we got from teachers?
Yes. So as part of another piece that the, the committee had been doing over the last few years is reaching out to the mentorships and asking how things went, what was great, what might have, what could have been changed to make it more effective. And this year, the responses came back as I was teaching for the first time with a teacher who had taught it before and it was, or and was able to support me, fruitful conversations, focus on story workshops. This is my second year, and I have done mentorship program. So this is someone that had come back because they had, they, they found another need that had, and another mentor that was able to push their practice further. These are, there were so many heartfelt thank yous in there from both mentors and mentees about this meaningful time together that has really brought their practice to a place where they feel proud and secure in, in the, the cutting edge of pedagogy and the work that we do in learning and bringing students forward, whether that's in math, whether that's in literacy, whether that's in, in personal health, whether that's in outdoor ed. Shout out to Mike Deng for being an amazing outdoor ed mentor that has done so much amazing work over at Wellington, bringing in teachers with, from, from many different subject areas of focus, focuses, and infusing outdoor ed with the work. And also David Chin did some really cool work out at Dover incorporating mental health work with outdoor ed. So there's some really phenomenal work happening from our, our NDTA members that are accessing the program in meaningful ways to, to bring the, the profession forward, but also to set that high standard that Naimo and Lady Smith Public Schools have here in, in learning and supporting each other. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I especially liked the comment about the professional development. And when I was mentioning about those grouped, group mentorships we're so excited about, that really was really tailored ProD through one mentor and how a group of teachers that were kind of new to each other all got to really dig deep into the topic and then support each other afterwards. So yeah, thanks for reminding us of some of those powerful stories, Chris. There's some beautiful mentorships that happen this year. And so plans for the future, it was a little bit exciting for me at the NDTA AGM, at the very, very end of the meeting when everyone is quite tired. There is a surge of people interested in joining our committee, and so much so that we had to do speeches and vote to fill it up. So coming from the last two years where we were kind of really trying to recruit actively and, and finding it harder to get people to be a part of the committee, it was just such a welcome surprise to have all this flood of people that really wanted to join the work. And I'm really curious and excited to see how this will impact our work moving forward. The more voices we have, you know, the more ideas, the more energy we have around this, I think is a really positive thing. And we really do hope to kind of build a bank of mentors. We want strong educators who exemplify excellent coaching and mentor skills. And so we wanted to start exploring how we might provide training for some of those mentors to further those skills and actively seek out more high school committee members. So although there was quite a lot of mentorships happening within high school this year, and we don't have a lot of representation on the committee, so we're just going to really try to target and find people that are interested in joining us. And to gather more insight, so we plan to go to the TMBC Conference again next year and just to continue to build more insights. So there's lots of exciting work coming for next year. And then just why we do this work. So our role as the Mentorship Committee is really to help build systems and support to facilitate a rich supportive resource for education within our district and to help revitalize professional careers for people who maybe need an extra spark, helping uncover or rediscover or celebrate their true joy in their work. And our committee believes in the benefits of mentorship in our district for teachers. So providing these conditions for teachers to thrive is a passion of ours, and it's a springboard for positive change. And it is what we believe impacts students the most profoundly in their learning. And we just want to thank you so much for giving us time to share this exciting work. And yeah, we're open to questions if we have time. I'm not sure what else is on the agenda, but we welcome those if you have any.
Christina and Chris, thank you for starting us off in such a, such a good way. I really like the fact that you're supporting your colleagues on this level and seeing the growing interest from zero to, to a number of people wanting to come on board at the committee level. And you know, this even shout, like when Chris shouting out his colleagues at Wellington and Dover, just, you know, it shows that you're a team and you have your colleagues back. So thank you so much for the presentation. If we have any questions or comments, I see a few in the chat. So it looks like they're quite a bit of interest. So we'll start with, I see Naomi has a comment.
Hi. Thanks so much for the, the presentation and the work that you're doing to support teachers, all teachers in the district. And I really like when you said about harnessing the, the, the teachers that have been teaching over four years because, you know, sometimes they need that uplifting too, and like you said, to find that spark again. I just think back to when I started my very first job, and I remember like, oh, here's your classroom, and that was it. And I was like, okay, I guess I've got to start building this myself, right? And I was very fortunate because I was teaching in a really small school, and it was a very tight-knit group of teachers and support staff. And I had lots of people taking care of me and helping me, but you know, in the bigger schools, sometimes you can get lost. And I noticed that you had said in the report that you'd like to get more secondary teachers, you know, involved. And I do think that's really important because I did, I started out elementary for six years, moved up to secondary. I was going to add, you know, and I teach at the University and the Faculty of Education. And one of the concerns we have are the statistics that are coming back that there's a really concerning number of students, teachers after five years that are quitting the profession. And so, you know, we've been brainstorming and thinking like, how can we better prepare them, you know, for the teaching world? Because we need to find different ways of, of making the experience, you know, even in the classroom, more real for them. But this kind of support, I think, will help those teachers know that they've got somebody beside them that can give them ideas and provide that support and guidance. So raise my hands to you guys. I think it's really a, a beautiful committee doing great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Naomi, for those good words. Next on the list, I see Chantel has a comment.
Chris, though, would like to comment on what Naomi said. Yes.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, and thank you, Naomi. And also, our piece of trying to pull in high school teachers is on the actual committee as well. But, but the, but the split of mentorships has like really, like that 79 of this year, it's about 50/50 for high school access versus elementary access, but also the retention of new early career teachers is, is so scary right now. The BCTF just put out their survey results, but last year's survey results was in two years. It's not even five years of that retention. It's now down to two years of a scary amount. I think Joe may be able to comment on that actual statistic, but it is, it's something that we need to do to help wrap around our early career folks and also those later career folks that are, that are needing a shift or needing, needing that re-spark. I love, I love that analogy because we have such empowered work and passion. And sometimes we just need a shift and a rephrase to, to remind us of, of those days and that work. So thank you, Naomi, for your comment.
Thanks for clarifying that, Chris. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mark, or Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Sorry I missed that. I was zoning in on Chantel's name. So yeah, go ahead, Chantel.
I know my name is really, really awesome, but yeah, it's pretty close to Chris. Um, yeah, Naomi said a lot of what I was going to say, so I'm not going to repeat too much. I am going to echo what she says. That teaching is a really complex job that requires lifelong learning and to be like basically a jack of all trades. And there's not too many other professions that are really like that, that can shift from one completely different area to a completely different other topic. And learning from each other in a safe space, uplifting each other in that work is just so critical. And I'm so, thank you. And I'm proud of you all for, for doing that and supporting each other, making sure each other's, you got each other's back basically and, and supporting each other. I love that there's going to be coaching skills, perhaps some training there as well. Teaching to kids is very different to teaching to adults sometimes, so there's a different dynamic there. The group mentorships, I mean, that's, that's really, really cool. So then you've got more minds in there. And rediscovering the joy and fulfillment. Yeah, that's, yeah. After 25, 30 years, you're going to need that spark again, right? It's hard. I don't, not too many people can, can feel that spark for that long. Kudos to the ones who can. But when you can, you can pass down that knowledge, that creates capacity in our younger teachers and our early career teachers. Thank you for, for your hard work on this. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. We'll move on. I see Tanya has both a question and a comment.
Thank you, Mark. Some of my comments were already made, but I will, one thing I do want to say is I'm really excited about this. I have done, I've been a mentor, I've been a mentee, I've run training of mentorship programs. One of the things I'm really interested in a bit is, is on a high level, kind of the training that, that the mentors get, like how long it is. And is there a bit of a screening process? Have you ever, like, are you open to the idea that maybe you find yourself in a situation that somebody wants to be a mentor, and you maybe then partly through the training realize you might have a concern or two about the individual? Because I know from my own experience, once, not often, but once in a while, that can happen.
Yeah, it's an important subject that's often discussed in the TMBC Teacher Mentorship BC Conference. And one of the things they shared recently is how hard it is now to get mentors that have been mentors for years to continue doing the work because they're tired and they don't have that capacity. So it's a bit of a twofold, I think, because you want to build skills in mentors and you want them to have access to, to new learning. And, and I think it's true to say that it's different teaching kids than it is adults and, and working and walking alongside and having good listening and pausing and paraphrasing and posing questions. And allowing the person you're working with to really uncover what it is they want to do next takes a lot of skill and practice. And so we get to practice that when we go to the TMBC Conference, which is really powerful because we practice, we talk about it, and we, so we get to bring that back to committee work. And, and top of our mind is how do we bring this kind of training and conversation with the mentors we currently have in the district? So we don't have the luxury of kind of picking and choosing who those are. We're just like, oh, you want to be a mentor? Like, we will take you with open arms because it is not easy to find them. But I think as we fine-tune things and we build momentum and we have more people excited about the work, those are kind of the steps we see, you know, in a year or two, right? So we did try to do the training this year, and we had a couple of mentors come, but it ended up just kind of being more of an informal conversation and just, I guess, relationship building. But Coquitlam has done some really powerful work on training mentors, and they have videos and have shared some of those resources with us. So we kind of have the, the bones of where to go next. It'll just be how we strategically offer those opportunities. And we have a new committee, so yeah, so we'll see how it evolves. Yeah.
Can I jump in on that, Mark, too, please?
Yeah.
Thank you. Also, I'm just, I'm just making sure the, the piece of understanding, we're not, the committee's not there to evaluate someone's practice, but we're there to provide skills and help them harness that ability to do a mentorship or be a mentor. So if, if internally that doesn't go for the, or if the person's feeling that's not right for them, then they would, they would step away from that, but we would just keep providing supports to help them grow as a mentor. Not necessarily value of what, like evaluate the work that they're doing.
Yeah.
That's not our, yeah, that's not our, our job as, as teacher colleagues. We're here to build up each other and make public education to a positive place for all of our students and, and everybody involved.
Quick follow-up?
Absolutely, please.
Just this conference sounds really interesting. I don't, I won't delve too deep into it. But so if I understood you correctly, Christine, Christina, it has a, it's a train the trainer component to it, like it trains you guys and, okay.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, and it's put on by a number of people who are kind of in mentor coordinator roles for their district. And it's been going, it's kind of like a bit of a grassroots thing that's been going on for quite a long time and really high-level training, even like facilitating workshops and how to hold space and how to start the day in a good way. And yeah, build those connections. So they're really modeling that for us. And yeah, it was just such a rich learning opportunity. Every time people go, they just can't stop talking about it. So it's, it's nice to have that as an option to, to give direction for people who are really passionate about mentorship. But we want to be thoughtful about how we pull it forward. And Chris, I appreciate your comment too, right? It's about, it's always about lifting each other up, whether it's been for a mentee, but it's the same, anybody who's whether it's been for a mentee, but it's the same, anybody who's interested in being a mentor, like, you know, we're happy to support. So, good clarification. Thanks for your question, Tanya.
Thank you, Tanya. And Christina and Chris, thank you so much again for your presentation on mentorship and uh, we don't see you again. I hope you both have a wonderful summer and enjoy your, enjoy your time.
Yeah, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna circle back to Danielle. I believe that Danielle's ready for Professional Development Report. Thumbs up on that?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Okay, curtain's opening up. You're on stage.
Perfect. Okay, now let's see if I can get the shared properly. Okay, is it sharing? Perfect, okay. So, um, thank you for your patience, everybody. I swear I am more techie than this is making me seem. Um, just seeming to have some issues with the computer currently trying to get onto Teams. Um, so, thank you for your patience again. Uh, so my name is Danielle Chason and I am the Pro D Chair for the NDTA. Uh, this is my third year in this role and it continues to be a privilege to support professional learning in our district. So, um, here's a snapshot of what Pro D has accomplished so far this year. Um, it's been a very full and rewarding year with lots of collaboration, creativity and commitment to meaningful professional development. And I'm gonna go into some detail on these items. Uh, before I get too far, I just want to say a, a great big thank you and take a moment to recognize our wonderful committee uh, who have dedicated hours of their time outside of the school day to support the work. Um, and so this is a heartfelt thank you to Jen Patton-Rogier, Melody Barta, Kristen Singbell, Sarah Armstrong, Kyla Silverton, Sam Hawkins, Jeff Webb, Loa Richardson, Suki Davis and Megan Thompson. Um, we'd also like to thank Joe Corthwaite, uh, Megan Simmer and Chris Perrier-Evely for their continued support in the office um, as released officers. And also a big special thank you to Natalia and Yama who are our executive assistants, um, and they do so much behind the scenes to keep Pro D running smoothly. Um, so, this is a new title for us uh, on the Pro D Committee. Uh, this is pronounced Quam Quam Sturk in Nat Sumat Sturk. Um, and we also have some lovely artwork here, which I will get into um, in a minute. So, our district-wide Pro D Day uh, did used to be called District Day. Uh, we have renamed it to Quam Quam Sturk in Nat Sumat Sturk. Um, a name that holds very deep meaning and reflects a more intentional connection to the land and language of the Tsunamuk people. So, in the fall of twenty twenty-four, we did reach out to language teachers to gift us a new name for dis- our district-wide Pro D Day. Um, I spoke directly with Mandy Jones and she connected with the language teachers here in the district um, to gift us this new name. This new name means bringing strength to one another. Uh, this powerful phrase became the theme for our event this year. So, the art that you saw on the previous slide is art that was created by Sam Quan, who is an indigenous, indigenous knowledge keeper uh, that we work very close with through Nat Sumat Atla Committee and created this new artwork, which is just wonderful. Um, he was very moved uh, to make us some art. Um, so, uh, we use the results from a feedback survey that the committee had sent out last year regarding professional development. And we got some ideas for presenters. Um, this uh, survey did also show us what teachers were looking for when it came to professional development. Uh, this led to me taking hours, reaching out to specialty presenters, um, on top of sending out just a general uh, application for presenters as well. And this year, we had our highest number of applicants ever for our district-wide Pro D Day. Um, I think we had almost one hundred people actually applied to present, which I think the year before we maybe were lucky if we had thirty. So, uh, we did have a lot to choose from. We ended up offering thirty-four sessions in the morning, thirty-two in the afternoon, and then five off-site options and four full-day sessions. Um, so, a lot of you will remember that unfortunately, the weather had other plans for us this year on the district-wide Pro D Day uh, in February. It was one of those rare February snowstorms. Um, so we were hit with the snow and we had to shut down for, before the afternoon sessions could begin. And a lot of our off-site uh, options were canceled. But despite the disruption, many presenters pivoted to presenting online. Um, and a lot of our sessions still went ahead. We had great attendance, better than I was thinking. Um, we had lots of people come in as well as presenters that came in and presented with a smile. Um, just showing the incredible dedication from both our presenters and our participants. Even after, I believe it was around eleven o'clock when um, the day was shut down, we had presenters that were like, hey, I'm here, I'm still good to present. And we had people who still stuck around wanting to see presentations uh, because they were that dedicated to the work that was being done. So, um, yeah, that was great. So, here are some of the offerings that we did have within our booklet. Um, so we had a variety of learning opportunities. Some of the highlights that I really wanna talk about was we did book with Jared Williams, who is a fantastic presenter in Duncan. Um, he was going to be presenting on Indigenous food systems on the land, but unfortunately we had to cancel. We had building thinking classrooms with Dr. Judy Larson, drum making with Michelle Sokolotsky. And uh, we also had at Creative Escapes um, at Rutherford Mall. Sorry, I think it's North Town Center now. I'm, and I'm a kid, so that's um, how I still think of it. Um, we had clay working and painting at the Creative Escapes. And then we also had Myron Dewick on assessment and he's from Kelowna. Um, and very, like, so many more options um, that you can see listed here. Um, so, this year, our individual Pro D funds budget was twenty thou- or sorry, two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, full-time teachers could access three hundred dollars for this year um, out of those funds. Um, and the way that our funding model goes is they can also access for the following year as well. So, if you were a one-point-oh teacher, you would have uh, six hundred dollars you could access for this year. Part-time teachers receive a pro-rated amount based off of their FTE. And then we did also allot three hundred dollars to TTOCs for the year um, to access as well. These funds can be used in a variety of uh, ways outlined in our policy. And here you can see some of the creative and impactful ways teachers decided to use them. Um, we have everything from professional books all the way to learning from the land and a little bit of everything in between. One of our most loved offerings is our professional learning groups. This year, we allocated seventy-two thousand dollars to support these groups. Teachers from groups of two to eight people can explore a shared area of interest. Funds can be used for resources, materials or release time to collaborate. We had over thirty groups participate this year covering a broad and exciting range of topics that you can see here. So, we had some folks focusing on beading, life skills, outdoor education, book battles, cultural art. Um, lots of really great Pro D happening there. Um, then we also offer ten professional learning partnerships. These are pairs of educators who are granted two days of release uh, time to act as critical colleagues, diving deeper into shared areas of learning. Um, and so here are some of the examples of the powerful topics explored through these partnerships. This year, we approved five capacity building grants, each valued at two thousand dollars. These grants support members in attending events with a broader, uh, even a more global perspective. The, the goal is for the participants to bring back what they learn and share it with the wider membership through a Pro D presentation. And these are some of the uh, options that uh, the grant recipients chose to attend this year. We had an Indigenous Education Conference, um, the Shameless Sexuality Conference, Outdoor Learning Conference, and the Amity International Nature School Program. So, some really great options. Um, and for some of them, if there were two folks that would head to the same conference together, um, our policy allows for that as well. And lastly, um, with our NMT Committee, so that's the Nat Sumat Atla Committee, uh, coming to a wrap-up this year, we uh, talked about what we had done in the past as a committee. And one of the things that really inspired me was a few years ago, uh, they ran a summer reading initiative for uh, teachers in the district. And basically, um, they got to choose either braiding sweetgrass or luchum's plants and the book was delivered to them with the expectation, or not even the expectation, but the understanding that they would share where they were reading on the land um, with these books. So, I was like, that was such a great opportunity for folks. So, I brought it to the committee to ask if we could do that. Um, so, I did propose this summer reading initiative and we had these five titles that you can see here. Um, they are all Canadian authors and publishers and I believe they are all BC-based, if not maybe four out of five of them. Um, there's no requirement attached to these books. Um, it was just an invitation for folks to read um, something over the summer, uh, enjoy the reading, perhaps spark conversation among colleagues come the fall. And we, to date, we've handed out um, over one hundred and fifty books total. So, that's been super great and also being able to support a local bookstore. So, that was, um, I'm hoping this is something we can continue on with. Um, and that kind of brings me to the close of the presentation. Um, I've, in the agenda, I did also see that there is a most, our most updated budget um, report, uh, which is at the, to the end of April twenty twenty-five. Um, as you look through it, you can see there's a few small overages that we need to adjust, um, but overall, things are looking great. And I would just like to thank you so much for your time and support and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. And you will indeed be forgiven by using the term Rutherford Mall. So, we're, we're quite okay with that.
Great.
Um, do we have any questions or comments? Tanya says that She's Red Embers is a lovely book.
It is, it's a great book.
I see a comment from Chantel.
You can go to Tanya first. She's got a question.
Okay, go ahead, Tanya. All right, I'll go first then. As I was listening and reading, as I went over the agenda and, and your, your guys' report, which is fantastic, by the way. The professional learning group, I'm seeing potentially some similarities between what a PLC could be. Am I wrong in making that connection? Would you agree? Or would, would you say, or like, what's the difference between a PLC and a PLG?
I would say they are quite different. Um, similar in some ways, but um, with a PLG, what the funding allows for is um, folks to use that money for buying resources. So, uh, for example, uh, I am part of a PLG this year and we've been looking into cultural art practices. So, we have gone out as a group and we've bought um, items to learn ourselves how to bead, how to sew, things like that. So, there, there are things for the member who is a part of the group um, to use that funding to, and it, it's up to them. They can use the funding for materials, they can use the funding for release time. Um, but essentially for them to learn something new uh, with their group that they want to use in their practice and um, yeah, and so it, most, most folks use it to get those materials to practice and those are materials they get to keep with them and say they move to a different school or to a different classroom, they get to take that with them. Um, it's not attached to the classroom. So, it's a little different than a PLC. A PLC, I feel like is more of a circle of inquiry within the school itself uh, based off of the school goals. So, a little bit different, but it does have that aspect of exploring something together as a group.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you, Tanya. And Chantel, I guess you're circled back.
Thank you. I actually find, I realize I do have a question, but it's kind of a, it's not a bit important question, but yours was more interesting, Tanya. Thank you. Um, thank you for doing this. I know that I, I go, I'm in the TTLC group with um, with folks and Joanna got to, or not Joanna, sorry, I'm reading your name, Danielle, uh, presented to us um, last week. So, thank you very much for that. And thank you for highlighting even some more things like the summer reads. That's such a great idea. Like, I mean, I'm a bu- big book lover, so um, book clubs are kind of my, my jam. And uh, that's just a really great way to add to the learning, um, especially the cultural aspect of things too. So, thank you for that. Um, it's just great work that's being happening um, with everybody. It, it, I didn't get to say this in the mentorship part, but I believe that like the, the professional development, the mentorship, all that stuff really actually create, uh, as somebody said, uh, build, builds a relationship, but also builds community. When you build relationships, you're building that community together. Um, and it just makes our school district stronger and better and, and everybody feeling happier. And hopefully that resonates with the students as well. So, um, my question though is, at the last line of the budget, it says suspense, in capital letters. And I'm like, what is that? I need to know. I'm super curious.
Um, so it is to keep you in suspense, essentially. Okay, just kidding. Um, so that is, if we have something that is um, sent to our budget that hasn't been coded yet, it is kind of held in the suspense account until we've dealt with it and we move that money again. Um, yeah, so it's just essentially just to hold um, something in a budget until we've, and we're pretty good about coding everything before we send it off to our bookkeeper. So, I have never had to use the suspense account, but it's there in case we need it. And it, it, it's always so fun because when I, I did start in this role, I was like, what is the suspense account? It's very suspenseful, but um, yeah, that's what it's there for. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Danielle. Thanks.
Thank you, Chantel. Uh, we have a comment from our board chair Naomi. Thank you for the presentation. Professional development is so important and it is great to see all of things your committee is doing to enhance teacher professional development. Sidebar note, your PowerPoint was designed beautifully, colorful, et cetera, very visually appealing. And I echo that because when I saw the little pop-ups coming up, I was totally engaged. So, thank you, Naomi.
I can't take all the credit. That is definitely Canva. Like, that is something that um, has been my secret tool in the back of, my, my back pocket is Canva. It really helps with those presentations, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Naomi says she wondered if it was Canva.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for Danielle? I don't see anything, so I want you to enjoy your evening and thank you so much for your presentation. And thank you to Joe for bailing you out there at the last minute.
Yes, thank you so much. It was really nice to see everybody. Have a great summer.
Have a great summer. Thank you, Danielle. Oops.
And you muted, Mark.
I was talking to my monitor. Uh, we're moving on to senior staff reports. We have a number of them. Uh, first up, eight point one will be our Assistant Superintendent Don Balcom with a report on the Board Authority Authorized Courses, SAA, and there will be a motion attached to approve those or to recommend approval. Thank you. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you through the chair. And I'll just start by uh, thanking, I don't know if, if our uh, folks from the NDT have already left, but I really appreciate the uh, presentations on professional development and mentorship. I did a TTOC interview today and one of the things that often comes up in TTOC interviews is what professional development opportunities are there for new teachers to the profession? And we always mention uh, both the professional development funds that are available to them, but also the mentorship program that is uh, that is run. So, it's a, I, I enjoyed the presentations and the Canva coloring as well. Super. Uh, we have four board, Authority Board Authorized Course uh, applications for you to consider uh, this evening. Sport History Twelve, which um, is a beautiful opportunity for students to explore historical and cultural impacts through sport. So, we're excited that uh, um, NDSS has proposed those. And then three um, proposed courses coming from John Barsby. One is around Indigenous technology, um, which is a super exciting opportunity for students to engage in a hands-on learning journey through traditional um, technologies for Indigenous communities. And then two that are related to students in their grade twelve year as they prepare to leave John Barsby and head off into the world. One is post-high school transitions, which are for students who are not sure um, if they wanna continue post-secondary learning, but they wanna know what comes after high school. So, it's all exploratory around what the world of work and uh, living on your own and finances is all about. Another one is post-secondary transitions, which is designed for students who say, I know I wanna continue my, my learning. So, what does that look like? And how do I engage in uh, in those activities? So, we're excited for those four course offerings. They're coming forward from um, teachers and staff that have put it together at NDSS and John Barsby. But it's all bought courses. They're, once approved, are available for all of our schools to offer to students. So, we're excited for those. And I'm happy to answer any questions before um, the motion is put forward for the, for the trustees.
Thank you, Don. Do we have any questions for Don? I don't see any questions. Tanya would like to move the motion, please, and read it.
I will read it. I have it right here.
Just a moment. I, I, I see, I see Naomi has a question. Naomi has a question. Sorry. Naomi has a question. Naomi has a question. Sorry, Naomi.
Sorry. I just was a little bit slow there on the uptake. Question about the technologies course. It sounds to me like some of this, just sort of knowing where Stephen came from for a few years. From Lady Smith Secondary, this sounds like you're taking a bit of the land based learning program at Lady Smith Secondary. And bringing it there, but sort of molding it into what would suit best for John Barsby. Am I correct?
This this course has been put together in consultation with Utasana and Utasana, so both with Mandy and with Gina. And also resources from both the Cowton District and Central Okanagan District, so where similar type land and language programs have existed. So yeah, they've definitely taken the wisdom of of the land and language program at Lady Smith Secondary. And said, how do we take those technologies and put them into a Bach course?
I think that's wonderful, Don. I'm super excited about it because it's been I've been advocating for more courses like this. To learn about the traditional teachings and and skills and knowledge. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'll give it a few more seconds for if anyone has any questions. Chantel has a question.
Thank you. That just. Made me think of something that I kind of wanted to know more more about. So it was last year that we were we were referring to that. The other course, the Bach course. That we approved and it was about. Getting credit for your traditional teachings. And learning about your traditional teachings, which is great. I love it. I'm wondering if that course, so the technology course now is, and that to me seems more like. Somebody who is indigenous, who identifies as indigenous, learning from their their elders, learning about their culture. This one sounds like it could be pretty much anybody that's very interested in the technology. Behind. Indigenous. Technology. So is that is that what I'm kind of understanding a bit more?
Absolutely. Last year, yeah, they definitely did the the culture. I can't remember the title of it. I should have it tip of my tongue. But yes, it was very much to honor the teachings and learnings that would happen outside of the school and community. And this. Is specifically designed to be done at school, so it could be indigenous and non indigenous students. Looking to engage with the technology and and get involved there and do some cedar weavings and some of the different activities, get on a loom and learn about that traditional technology.
It's fantastic. That is a really cool. I really think that's really awesome. I would have taken that in high school. I had it in high school. Thank you. And thank you to the teacher who brought this forward as well. I'm sorry, I have it written down somewhere, but. Oh, it's actually it's. Okay, so there's not a teacher's name here, but there's. Sorry, Yetzadot.
Utasana, yeah, so the so the school consulted it. So sometimes it gets. Courses get brought forward by a single teacher and sometimes a school. So this was the Barsby School Community saying, let's consult with Utasana. And Utasana, it's both Mandy and Gina, and then also looking at resources around the province and saying, let's build a course that's going to meet our needs locally.
Okay, fantastic. And so there is teachers that are are ready and and willing to to do this. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Do we have any more questions? Or Tanya entertains the motion?
I should probably ask a quick question before I move the motion and it's along the lines of. You've sort of touched on it, Don, but there are cultural activities that. Our students will do outside of their the school, particularly within the indigenous community. A friend's child was involved in a potlatch. There's hunting, there's fishing. And and I'm thinking about this in particular because I was in Toronto last year and I I don't know. You were aware, but that was one of the courses that one of the workshop where they talked about what they're doing in Ontario to really give. Allow students to get get credit for those activities. Would that also fit in this or do we have another way of?
Well, as students, so the the Bar course that got approved last year was called Cultural Connections. So that was the one that trustee Chantel was referring to. So a student could get credit for cultural connections, but also be taking Indigenous technologies as well. And both those courses are designed to be two credits or four credits, so a student could do. Two credits of cultural connections and two credits of Indigenous technology in one semester.
Okay. All right, and then I would like to move the motion that the Strategic Direction Committee. Recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty and I'm a Lady Smith approve the following courses as board authorized course. Bah as per Ministry Policy, Sports History Twelve, Post Secondary Transition Twelve, Post. High School Explorations Twelve and Indigenous Technology Twelve. And if I can get a second by Naomi?
I see I see Greg ahead of Naomi, so I'll go give Greg the second. And do you want to motivate that, Tanya?
Yes, please. I think this is fantastic. I think that the Indigenous Technologies course and it's giving. I have spent some time at Wellington as part of my role as their zone rep this year. In the indigenous classroom and seeing some of these activities. I learned a bit of weaving myself. I had an opportunity to learn. It's absolutely. It's incredibly it takes incredible patience and talent and it is a skill. It is absolutely. Something our students should be getting credit for. And as to a couple of these other ones. I know that that transition to high school out of high school is. Extremely difficult for for a lot of kids, whether they whether they know where they want to go or whether they don't know what where they want to go. And to have something like this. Is, I think, really vital in in what is becoming a more and more complex world, so. Kudos to the to the the staff for the foresight to come up with these ideas. It's absolutely fantastic.
Thank you, Tanya. Chantel, you had, you wanted to speak on the motion?
Yes, I would really like to speak in favor of the motion. I. Looking at these courses. They're all, as Tanya said. I've heard from post secondary students. I work at V I U and they talk about how the transition can be hard sometimes. And so having these transition. Programs is just fantastic. I think it's just really great. Forward thinking and seeing where there's maybe areas that need to be. Supported and they've gone for it and I really appreciate that. I just wanted to highlight the sports history. Twelve that they are going to be talking about mental health within that. I don't know if anybody's on the Michael Phelps documentary on mental health, but it was really impactful, you know, but you don't really know. And that one really hit hard and I really encourage others to to watch that documentary, actually, about. Mental health and sports. I think it's a huge. Thing that is not talked about enough. And it's so, so critical, so critical to the health and mental health of athletes. And anyone who's wanting to become an athlete, understanding that what's coming forward for them. And the fact that they add in diversity reconciliation, that's just. Perfect. Thank you very much to all the teachers and to all who worked into creating these Bach courses. I really appreciate it and I hope our students get some great benefits from them.
Thank you, Chantel. Tanya also forgot to say sports history is just a really interesting topic. Does anyone else want to speak? Sports impact culture, which impacts sports, Tanya says. Does anyone else want to speak on the motion before we we call the motion? I don't see anything. I I'd just like to say that. In a in a time where we see our Vancouver University cutting courses and at a time when. Districts across province are. Cutting in their programming, we in the Emily's Public Schools are blessed to be in a position to be adding courses. We've seen courses in the past such as financial literacy that Don led to us that have really positively impacted our students. Which helped set them up for success. Now we have. You know, four more board authorized courses coming up and. I'm I'm stoked. I really am. I can't speak much praise on this, so thank you so much, Don. And to all staff that put this together and collaboration, so. Maybe we call the question if there's anyone. Not in favor of the motion, please indicate it in the chat. Otherwise, it will move to the board. Okay, that looks unanimous to me, so. I will say the motion is approved. Thank you, Don. Thank you very much. Yeah, it's passed, so thank you, Tanya, for moving that and Greg seconding it. We'll move on now to the next item. We have a few more. We have. Our superintendent, Robin, on a presentation on Safe City Schools and there is a motion attached. We're always blessed to have you, Robin.
Thank you very much, trustee Robinson. Very pleased to be here this evening. And thank you, Don, for your great presentation on some great courses for all of our learners out there. So thank you. And so I'm speaking on behalf of Safe Schools Committee. And I had the great opportunity to work with the trustee leaders in relation to that particular committee. Safe Schools Committee, I believe, has a long history in our district and it might even had a previous name like Race Relations and so on and so forth. And I think that the intention of this committee has always been to provide. Safe inclusive communities and schools for our learners and our staff. In terms of providing those safe spaces. And I think that's always the good intentions of what this committee has been doing. And the work that they have been doing in the past. Right now, I think, though, that maybe it's time for a bit of a look at how we can make it more intentional. And perhaps even adjust it according to its scope. So in front of you in your agenda would be some background on it. And that maybe a look at how we can adjust it to really have a specific task. And to really incorporate student voice into the the work around a policy. So you'll see in the discussion component of this sheet, the action sheet. That we want to look at four major changes to this committee. Focus committee on a single task of drafting the Jedi policy, which was formerly the inclusion policy. Enhance the role of student voice on the committee. And then, of course, changing the committee to make it an ad hoc committee. As well as changing the name to reflect its actual mission. And so you can see there, it's really looking at how do we change our terms of reference? How do we incorporate voice and how do we actually move forward over a period of year long work together? Which would include a knowledge keeper, which would include student voice. In terms of having that task of creating that Jedi policy. That at this time has not been accomplished, but soon will be moving forward with this terms of reference. And so I'll open it up to questions in terms of the appendix, which has been attached around the Jedi Ad Hoc Committee. And certainly willing to share and maybe even to the trustees who are on that committee could also maybe. Add anything that I might have missed.
Thank you, Robin. Do we have any questions or any input from the two trustees that are on the committee? Or comments? Chantel?
Input, comment, thoughts, opinions, whatever you want to call it, but. It I've been on this committee for a bit now and. Those who have been on the committee too have found it kind of challenging when you don't have a very direct focus and. There are so many things to work on, right? There there are so many things that we could work on. That it was a lot of spinning wheels sort of thing, so we came to this. With some discussion and stuff like that about how. Discussing and and collaborating with many different diverse voices. For the Jedi policy could be a really great foundational document, like the inclusion policy, from what I understand, historically was created by. Or helped formed by the inclusion or the the Safe Schools Committee, so. I think it's just a great thing for us to basically basically be doing that again with with student voice, which is fantastic and knowledge keeper, which is also amazing. It just makes it very robust and brings it up to date. To our time now and, you know, I was a little nervous about bringing it to an. Creating an ad hoc committee or or moving it to an ad hoc committee instead of a permanent committee. But I realized that, as I said, there there's a lot of different pieces of work that can be done. And this to me kind of opens up the opportunity to have future ad hoc committees. That could be very focused, right? The the board can decide, okay, well, we really want to work on this. We want to get some input about this. Let's create an ad hoc committee around that specific idea and. You get more buy in when you have a more focused group and you know exactly what the task is and what the time limits are, not time limits. Sometimes these things might take more time than we thought, right? If we want to do it right, sometimes we need to take a little bit longer, but. I think that having it like this sort of makes it feel. More focused. I keep saying that word a lot tonight. I am not as focused as I want to be tonight, but. I think it's going to be a really good thing and I think. We're going to get a lot more buy in. We're going to get a lot more great diverse voices into this. That is really, really critical for this foundational work, so. Thank you. Thank you, Robin, for your collaboration. Sean as well for putting input in there as well. Tanya. I think we've kind of come up with something really, really good here, so thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Tanya, you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. I'll give a little bit more background also in the fact that. I was part of the group and when I was first elected in twenty fourteen. And then I guess it was by January twenty fifteen, that's when we looked at taking race relations. And the Soji Committee forming one group. And the reason for that was there was a lot of overlap in terms of the individuals who were on that committee and. It felt like it made a lot of sense and it was a good idea at the time. The problem became. That we were finding more and more that the committee was very operational, which was not really the role we wanted. We wanted to have the more bigger picture governance and so. Once we created that inclusion policy, we didn't really know where to go, so I. Concur with what Chantel's saying about the group spinning its wheels. I think this is really exciting. I think anything that gives us more student input. And really gives them a meaningful way of getting involved. Is is fantastic and I think that it's important that we realize that this is. Just because something's ad hoc doesn't mean. That nothing, nothing will happen again or that that we won't. Something else might come out of it. It that is the key is that the committees need to exist for a purpose and and achieve. Meaningful goals. It's not about just having a committee for the sake of having a committee and I think that. What Robin has suggested and what we talked through is going to meet that aim, so this is this is really quite exciting.
And if I could, through the chair.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I I think that as we work through the terms of reference in terms of how would we want to set the stage for going through this process next year. I think the added element, as I think trustee Brozovic and trustee Morve may comment to, would be around that student voice. They have the lived experience that's current right now, that's occurring within the schools. And I think that as we're trying to gather feedback, gather. Evidence and have an informed opinion around how we we can make schools safer. With that input put into a policy that then staff can take forward around an A P. It just really will help this particular policy come to life. And I think that both of them may comment to it is that sometimes when we have committee work. If we have a specific task, a specific goal, then we can work through a terms of reference that actually meets meets that need. But also maybe even have a changing. Group of people who have that expertise, who would like to be part of that as well. And I think that the other work that we did behind the scenes would be, we touched base with. N D T A as well as Q P. And Deepak with regard to our new terms of reference.
Thank you, Robin. Do we have any other questions or input before we. Entertain a motion? I don't see any. Does it? Who would like to move the motion? There's a motion that's recommended by staff. Go ahead, Chantel.
Thank you, Chair. That the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty and I'm a Lady Smith amend the terms of reference. To the Safe Schools Committee as presented.
Thank you, Chantel, and seconded by Tanya. We'd like to motivate Chantel.
I think my previous words kind of stand for that. I think it's a great progression, the evolution of this committee, and I think there's going to be some. uh, the evolution of this committee, and uh I think there's going to be some really great work next year being done.
Thank you. Thank you, Chantel. Anybody else have any, any input before we call a motion? I'll, I'll just add that uh I I felt Chantel's uh initial um thoughts when it came to moving it from how it is now to an ad hoc, but I see after reading through the lines and and looking into it, that it does have the potential for enhancing student voice and using it when we need to use it as opposed to having it just there for the sake of having it. So it seems appropriate to me to move forward. So I'll be supporting the motion. Having said that, uh, I'll guess I'll call the motion. If anyone is opposed to the motion, please indicate it in chat. Otherwise, it will it will carry as it goes as the votes. And I don't see any votes against, so I'm going to say that the motion passed. So thank you, Robin, for presenting this with the Safe Schools Committee and the new enhancement for it, the new change. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to eight point three. We have Jillian, our Executive Director of Communications, Privacy and Community Engagement. And Jillian is going to bring us some administrative procedure three two two information, media and schools. Here's to you, Mrs. Robinson. Go ahead.
Well, it's actually Ms. Robinson, but um, so the updated AP is, as mentioned in the information sheet, um, that we are bringing our AP in line with our current practices for media relations here at NLPS. So for quite some time, we've had a position of executive a director or director of communications, and as many organizations do, media requests come through uh that position to field and respond to those requests in a timely manner. And one of the primary reasons for this is that our school staff are incredibly busy. Um, media have deadlines, and we want to make sure that media have their curries responded to as quickly as possible without having to have uh school staff uh worry about uh a deadline of that day, as they have many of their own deadlines in their schools. So we have uh looked at many other media relations policies in districts across British Columbia and updated ours accordingly.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Jillian? And I apologize, by the way, it was this, it was the the music, the song from Simon and Garfunkel that got me going.
It's all good.
Anyone have any questions or comments? I don't see anything. I think you're off the hook. Thanks, Jillian. Short, sweet, wonderful. Okay, um, hearing that, we'll move on to eight point four. Um, Mark Walsh is going to be presenting with Paul, Administrative Procedure three oh five point eight AP Video Surveillance Facilities and School Buses.
Great, thank you, Chair. Um, and so the this evening, um, just presenting not a new AP, but uh some minor updates to currently existing AP that will also be renumbered according to uh our uh new policy framework. So this evening, the change is relatively minor. Um, it, as noted in the information sheet, some terminology change. Uh, as you know, technology moves uh quite fast. Uh, the permission, um, the the direct permission, and we've been doing this, and we probably didn't need the language, but specifically the permission to use the the video monitoring for the purposes of identifying after-hours trespassing and vandalism. I will say this has been an area, as we've expanded some camera use in our schools in collaboration with the RCMP, has been actually quite successful in reducing vandalism and also in uh enhancing safety at our schools. So we kind of, we know where to look uh before folks um get there uh in in the morning. So uh some positive there. And then we just also wanted to be very uh clear about uh how uh there the the files are accessed, and just to be also clear on the retention of those um files to make sure we're in alignment with best practice as well as FIPPA. So relatively minor changes um are are there. Um, the vast majority of the AP uh remains as it previously was.
Thanks, Mark. Do we have Paul to make any presentation on this?
We're giving Paul the evening off uh for uh because I'm I'm conversant in the changes as we worked on them together, and and Mr. Sabo is here as well.
Wonderful. Thanks. Thanks, Mark. Do you have any questions or comments from Mark? Question from Chantel.
Okay, I truly didn't think I'm going to have a lot of questions tonight, so um, I'm surprised myself. Um, I'm reading through this, I read through it a few times now, and this is going to be a weird question, um, and forgive me if it sounds really odd. I'm just wondering, the video cameras may be used to monitor and or record, and I think to myself, what about staff using their phones um or something like that to record or monitor? Um, where does that fit into this um polit, this um AP?
Uh, through Chair, it would not fit into this AP as far as I'm aware. Our our suite of privacy, specifically privacy related on the collection, use and disclosure of personal information, I think would cover that. The the reason this uh particular um AP stands on its own, I think is largely because of the school act requirements uh with respect to a consultation with the PAC. That's where it kind of stemmed from initially. That's why it's kind of different generally than even though we still abide by collection, use and disclosure requirements. Um, but that's, that's why video cameras are on their own in in this event.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that. I appreciate that. And I I do appreciate that, yeah, PACs have to be um it has to be discussed with PACs. I was really surprised. That's, that's really cool. It's a good idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Chantel. I have a comment from Jeff.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I don't know if this is one of the changes, but it gave me a chance to relook at this um AP. And on one point three, it talks about a discussion of less invasive alternatives. And it got me thinking about um the school buses, and that we'd like to have a discussion because a part of the discussion of having EAs of getting EAs more hours, I do know that some districts do use EAs on buses for um uh for the bus trips. So um, I just, yeah, it was just something I just want to put there. We'll probably bring it up through Labor Manager and stuff, but I just kind of caught my eye that um, you know, maybe we should have EAs on buses instead of uh, instead of cameras. So, thanks.
And through through Chair, may I comment?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so and 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 thank you for the 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 comment, Jeff, to note that that section of one point three, the less invasive alternatives is uh it was previously existing. So the idea, of course, is that we're trying to balance between the privacy uh, you know, rights of our students uh as well as the, you know, needs for security, et cetera. And so uh, that's, that's where that language comes from. What I will say is that we've had actually quite a significant push from a number of our uh PACs hoping uh for an expanded use of of cameras, actually. Uh, so um interesting, interesting development in the last couple of years, we've noted.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for the question. Jeff, I see a question from Tanya.
Uh, Mark may have just answered my question, because I guess what I would, what I've been wondering is uh, if there's been any pushback or from PACs or from parents around the use of the video in in schools and on the buses.
So I I through your chair, I would say no, in the, and I think that there's a, there's an understanding that we are very privacy conscious in the sense that we're just not using, we're just not looking at the videos for the sake of of looking at the at the the videos as an example. Uh, and again, it's been the exact opposite. We've had um a lot of push um from parents at a number of our secondary schools to hopefully expand what uh to uh increase camera use within the school. As the board will recall, we did work with the RCMP mainly for external expansion, um, which has done, as we understand it, certainly last year bore out um a positive impact on vandalism. Uh, but also it's been useful working with the RCMP when we've had uh vandalism to be able to to identify who who is doing that. And as also noted, uh, you know, with the increase of, you know, folks that are uh, you know, don't have a home, uh, you go coming onto the grounds, it's helped us be kind of where where those blind spots are for us, and the cameras have filled in a little bit of that. And so our staff is um can't say completely um not impacted, but less impacted by surprises when they attend uh school uh in the morning.
May I have a follow-up?
Go ahead, Tanya.
Forgive me if this isn't completely in along the right lines for follow-up, but I'm going to expand the uh just from a consent, informed consent, informed awareness perspective. Uh, I saw that there, the signage is all up there, but is it also noted in uh the handbooks that families get?
I will have to get, uh, through your chair, I will have to get back to you on on that particular topic.
Thank you.
I would assume that in the, in the schools that we have external cameras, that probably that is not the case. Because almost in, almost in no circumstance would we rely upon them um for kind of school-based behavioral issues because they're external. They'd be for evening um evening use, and we'd rely on the signs for the public users of the facilities.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking, to be clear, is just because I'm anticipating somebody coming on us and saying, well, I didn't, a student can't be, well, in theory couldn't, because it's right in their school, the signage and that. But that a parent who maybe isn't in the school very often or isn't in the school at all might say, well, I had no idea that this was happening, you know, and might be like, you shouldn't be recording my kid without my knowledge, you know?
And I, through your chair, I'll get, I will get the answer to whether that's there, or we just rely upon the signage.
Thank you for the question, Tanya, and thank you, Mark. There any other questions for Mark before we move on to the next item on the on the agenda? Seeing none, and moving on with the Mark Walsh Show for this evening, um, I think you have uh Mary Sakaro with you this evening?
Yes, Mary is here uh this evening, and thank you very much, Mary, for putting together this uh carbon neutral report that we have for the board. Uh, and so I'll just do a brief overview and and uh ask Mary if she has any comments, and then um she'll probably answer the questions. And so we know that both the the board has an environmental uh plan that outlines an ambitious goal to reduce carbon emissions. We also have responsibilities with respect to the province and the expectation of public sector entities to reduce emissions. And so we're, you you'll see on page seventy-one um, the ambitious target of both uh the board, but uh the ministry with respect to emissions to 2030. Reality is, is we're probably not going to meet that 2030 requirement. Uh, you know, the, I mean, I guess a bit of the good news is we're coming down swiftly from our uh COVID years, uh, because of course we we were pumping in a lot of cold air to keep the airflow moving quickly in schools during COVID, as well as now we've electrified many of our our systems. So the team uh in facilities led by Mary continues to to make some great strides, and I know Pete and his team buying uh what we call the white fleet. So this would be electricians and plumbers and folks um that work in mainly our trades uh going out um and doing their work are increasingly being able to access electric vehicles, which is making a quite a dent in our our emissions, which is a positive. But again, in order to achieve both the board goal and the ministry goal, uh, we would need significant uh investments in capital that are um in reality unrealistic at this particular uh juncture, given you know, tight budgets, both at a district level, but uh perhaps more importantly, given the ministry or the the government has a mandate at the government level. Uh, but generally, you can see, despite increased enrollment, despite increased uh numbers of spaces that we're using for a variety of programs, you can think about I C Y operating more at um uh at Dufferin as an example. You can think of the various programming that we've seen at Woodlands. You can think of our high schools that are are bursting and using portables in some of our north end schools, and we can, despite increased use of facilities, we're actually making good progress in actually reducing GHG emissions, which is uh it's relatively minor for building use, but overall, that's quite an achievement, given uh the percentage of increase of the amount of space we're using. So very, I think, very, very positive there with support of the ministry, with support of the board uh investments. And you'll see the the, and sorry, I should also point out with the support of B C Hydro, who is a huge partner as well as Fortis. And so you'll see plans uh to continue to able to reduce, and later this evening, the board's going to be asked to uh pass a capital plan, which will also have um some environmental associated requests that will have a positive impact on GHG if the ministry uh approves. So perhaps I could ask Mary to jump on and and outline anything that I've missed uh prior to uh answering questions uh from trustees.
There we go. The one thing I do want to um just bring to everyone's attention is we um acted on creating a greenhouse gas emissions strategy plan, and that is now in the hands of these, which was fully funded by B C Hydro. That's now in the hands of B C Hydro um engineers. They're reviewing it, and I should be getting that back this summer, and that'll tell, that'll give us a good indication capital dollars-wise, ministry dollar-wise, what it's going to take to electrify our buildings. Okay, it has nothing to do with fleet, yellow fleet or white fleet, but it's our buildings, um, you know, which also create most of our um emissions. But that's, that'll be an interesting number. I I think it's going to be very high, and it shouldn't come as a surprise, but at least we have some kind of idea in how to tackle this moving forward to somehow get close to those targets that Mark was um talking about. But on the flip side, our fleet is making a big dent in our GHG emissions, and we received a lot of funding from the Zero Emissions Transit Fund. And um, yeah, we just continue anytime there's there's failures or there is capital equipment that needs to be upgraded, we always are looking at um in um replacing with the most up-to-date technology, electrify where we can. And what else I wanted to say? I think that's about it. Yeah.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mary, and thank you, Mark. Uh, at this time, I understand any questions may have for Mark or Mary? Anybody on the committee? Don't see, oh, I see a comment from Chantel. Go ahead, Chantel.
I just, I gotta say it. I think great work. I I I didn't really understand this as much in the past years, and now I'm getting like, I'm understanding the cycles and what we're we're recording and stuff like that, and seeing kind of the year over year. Um, especially now, we've, 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 I can't wait to see what we we find about our paper. Um, I know we're really trying to reduce our our paper and stuff like that, too. Um, I think it's really great work, and it's really important work that people don't fully realize, because it's sort of like the um we're trying to upgrade our systems um and not be as pu- uh uh as big of polluters um as we are now, right? Um, and we always have those constraints of funding, of course, that's is a big thing. I'm really, really glad that we're partnering with B C Hydro. I know they're all over this. Um, the le- less amount of energy that they have to uh send to us, um, the better, um, better for everybody. And um, I just really thank you for all your work. I I, it's a lot of work to put all this together. Um, and also do all that work, too, during throughout the year. So appreciate that very much. Thank you. And we'll get to our targets when we get to our targets. You never know, something big could happen and and we get our target. You never know. There's always hope in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Chantel. Do we have any further comments or questions before we move on to the next item of the agenda? I don't see any, so I'll, I'll just ask my question now, Mark. Um, when we're talking about emissions, do we take into account the fact that we've gone a lot online for our meetings? Is that factored into the equation at all? Not at all. So in addition to
That's a tough number to calculate.
I would, I would imagine, but I'm sure there must be some impact, because since COVID and and even, you know, onwards and upwards, we we're, most of our meetings have been, in fact, online. So and it's, it is, as you said, tough to to calculate. I have a question from Greg. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, hopefully my technology works okay. Um, yeah, thank you. Through you, Chair, to staff. Thank you for the report. Um, a question related to, uh, and I think maybe you touched on this a little bit as our Question related to, and I think maybe you touched on this a little bit as our student population is growing. My question relates more to the new spaces we're creating for before and after school and daycare. Do those get factored in or are they all coming online as like a net zero carbon improvement?
Wanting to answer that, Mark?
Yes, please, Mary.
Okay, so if you're talking about the ministry before and after daycares, so those are all electric systems. So they do not emit any emissions. And I do not account for them in the reporting because they're not one of our schools. Okay, we don't, yeah, they're not a school district. How do I say, they're operated by a different entity. That makes sense. And they're all electric anyway, so they don't emit emissions.
And if I may, Mark, just a follow up comment?
Yeah, go for it, Greg.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that, Mary. I think, you know, just wanna share my support in the sense that, you know, we recognize that these are ambitious goals and that it's highly dependent on provincial funding to achieve these goals. And just that, you know, I appreciate the work. And when we have these existential challenges that we're trying to accomplish, I think any little pieces of success that we can achieve along our journey is something to be celebrated. So thank you for to Mark, Mary and the staff for all the work that you do and in working towards these emissions reductions targets. Thank you.
Welcome. Good question, Greg. Thank you very much. And unless there's any anybody else that have a question. Mary, thank you so much. Mark's gonna stick around for a bit longer. He's got a few more items, but thank you so much.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay, we can move on to item eight point six. Proposed twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven minor capital plan submission, and you're with somebody that we're familiar with, Pete.
And through your chair, we also have Kevin Wininsky here this this evening. I think he's met the board before, but maybe Kevin, you want to just pop on and say hello so your face can come up for a moment?
Welcome, Kevin. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So thank you, Chair. So there's two two items, both associated with motion. So just a little bit of background. So the board on a yearly basis has a capital plan consisting of minor capital request and a major capital request. The first item is a minor capital request. So for the sake of the the public watching, the board gets the vast, vast, vast majority of its funding to support the upgrading, expansion of facilities from the Ministry of Education through a variety of very specific capital funding envelopes. And so the it's the board, the board is being asked to set its priorities. And then staff put together the rationale as to why the ministry should approve it in the various capital envelopes. And then the ministry makes a determination of what it's ultimately going to fund. And I guess it would be now Ministry of Infrastructure rather than Ministry of Education. But the the envelopes haven't changed. So it's important to note that the board, if a building is needing replacement, the board can want to replace it, but almost under no circumstance would the board ever have the financial locally funded financial ability to replace that building. So we are at the behest of the of of the government of Victoria on that front. So when we look at the programs, there's child in the minor capital, there's childcare, so for minor changes, not major new builds. School enhancements, so this is a wide variety of of options for us. We're obviously focused and I'll get to that in a moment on some specific items. Carbon neutral capital program, so what we were just talking about, playground enhancement, bus replacement, building envelope program, which is essentially finished in our district, and the school food infrastructure program. So on the childcare minor, there's a list of schools that we are looking at to provide before and after. And you'll recognize Rutherford to Cold North Oyster Park Avenue. And the board did approve the expansion to two north end additional up to two additional north end facilities. And so what this would be is to get the minor dollars that we need to make the small changes, the cobbies, the things like that, not a new building for these particular before and after school programs. So not a lot of funding and so we could get up, we could get them all theoretically from a funding perspective. School enhancement program, you'll see there's a number, a number of them and we're we're doing two things. One, we're trying to make up for a bit of a gap in our annual facilities grants. So we're saying we'd love a pot of money to get our roofing projects up to up to where we want them to be. And then you'll see Lady Smith Secondary School Transformer Replacement. Board will recall, we lost a transformer at Dover, I guess, two years ago now, that had significant operational impacts. And so what we've done is we've created a program that we're looking to proactively replace, you know, where where they need replacement. And so not a nice to have and need to have. And so that's why you're not seeing, you know, the, you know, great new facilities as an example, or great use in in the facilities. This is just the things we need to do under that program. Then you also see L I S and N D S, as mentioned, I think ten different projects. And that's again, making the point to the ministry, it's time for replacement. It's not time for these upgrades because if you add it all up, it just doesn't make any sense. And so that's a little bit of strategy, just to remind the ministry that the the replacement is needed. We don't actually want some of the the requests that we have, and they know, they know that. Carbon initial program, you'll see what we're looking for there, Mountain View, Lady Smith and the impact that we would have. Normally, we'd only get one project out of the the group that we're asking for, so just to be aware. Playground Equipment Program, you'll see the bus replacement program. At this point, it's a diesel bus, unfortunately, just because of the issues that we that we're, we've kind of come to the edge of our electrification from a service versus a payback perspective from G H G. That could change if things stabilize for us, but we just want to make sure that we're not impacting service to kids. Building envelope program, you'll see again, Lady Smith Intermediate, hopefully this doesn't happen because we're trying to replace it. And then finally, with the fit program, the board knows about all of the food being made over at Woodlands by the the foundation. There's also some needs in our secondaries and elementaries for some minor infrastructure to continue to support food. So we have a bit more flexibility, so you're not approving the specific asks this evening. But we will have the final list available when our capital plan goes in. So happy to answer any questions. Remember the major capitals, so the replacement of N D seismic is the next motion. This is only the minor. Pete, did you want to add anything before trustees ask questions?
Thank you. Good evening. Just a little bit about the childcare. So last year, we didn't receive any approvals in our childcare announcement letter. And the ministry has indicated that they continue to work on last year's requests. And they haven't actually given us a submission date for the child cares either in the minor or major section as they're still working through the requests from last year. So we still wait to hear from the ministry a little bit of the submission on that, on that section of the programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. I have a question from Greg.
Thank you, Chair, through you to staff. I'm just curious about the Lady Smith Transformer project. Does that project also provide capacity if if staff thought it was a good idea to add a bus charging station at that school?
I will turn that over to Pete if I could, Chair.
Yes, yes, it it could. The school may be limited by the service to the transformer. The school may be limited by the transformer or the service in the school. At this point, we don't believe that we would be limited from putting a bus charger at Lady Smith Secondary at this time. However, we will be looking at future proofing when we do replace the transformer for not only for, you know, a bus charger, but any other kind of infrastructure needs we might want to do in the future, like electrification at the school, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. That was what I was getting at. You read my mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Jeff has a question for us.
Thanks, Chair. I guess through to Mark and Pete, sorry, I don't have the number, but under the school announcement program, the roof replacements that we're talking about, we feel that the employer has done a very admirable job in bringing a lot of the work back in house. Roofing, Pete, is something we've never really discussed, you know, beyond our our roofer and halftime helper that comes out. Are we getting just looking there about the pressures on A F G and stuff like that? Are we getting near a point that maybe we should start having some serious exploratory discussions about maybe trying to bring some of the roof replacement in house? Because what we have now, we can't do that on our own. Thanks.
Yeah, yes, through the chair, tongue in cheek, yeah, we got the memo and we are thinking about it. And I, Jeff, I will, we, the district was challenged, facilities was challenged by the Secretary Treasurer to introduce more of these programs that we tendered out in the past. And so this year's we are planning to do a number of portables at Dover Bay as part of the roofing program with our capital implementation team. And we're so we're dipping our toe into the waters and looking at expanding, starting small and then seeing what it takes to do roofing. And roofing is a bit challenging. It's it's very intense in the summer and a lot of our work is intense in the summer. So how we proceed with that work is going to be, has to be well thought out. But we are starting to look at that and other portions like flooring that we've traditionally gone out to tender and we're starting to look at how we might deliver that internally.
Thank you, Jeff and Pete. Do we have any other questions before we entertain a motion for for this? Don't see any, so I'm going to ask if someone would like to move the motion that we have recommended for minor capital. Thank you, Naomi. Naomi will move the motion. Go ahead.
Okay, so now I just have to zip back up to the first page. Just hold on one second. The Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty Eight and Anima Lady Smith, in accordance with provisions under section one four two, parentheses four of the School Act, approve the minor, the proposed minor capital plan for two thousand twenty six, twenty seven as provided for submission to the Ministry of Infrastructure and Ministry of Education and Childcare Capital Branch.
Thank you. I see Chantel having seconded the motion. Do you want to motivate that, Naomi?
I just, other than to say, I just so appreciate the work of Mark and Pete and the team. And, you know, just here's hoping that we can get what we really, really want and just really grateful for all the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Does anyone else have any, any comments before we call the motion? I don't see any, so I'm gonna call the motion now. If you are opposed to the motion, please indicate so in the chat on the side. And if I don't see any, then we'll call it unanimous. I'll give it just another second. Not seeing any, so at that point, we'll we'll say that passed unanimously. Thank you, Mary, and thank you, Mark and Pete. We'll move on to the next item of the agenda, which is eight point seven. Again, the same line, the major five year capital plan. Go ahead, Mark and Pete.
Great, thank you, Chair. So yeah, as the the major, we'll see the, we'll see the the specific envelopes again within major. One is childcare, so that's for large, essentially the the buildings that we saw when we toured Georgia is as an example, and so kind of new builds or additions to schools for childcare purposes. Rural District Program, so this is, it's really in the case that that for us, it would be to tear down a facility that is in a rural area if we ever needed to. And so this was used in the past for the property at Selby, but we do not have anything under that. Site acquisition, so this is a directly attached to our school site acquisition charge, just to tell the ministry, here's where we think land in the future would be required. And then school expansion, self explanatory school replacement and seismic mitigation. And so from a childcare perspective, the board has already approved the idea of a site at Dufferin, a large site for childcare. And so you'll see that's number one. Rutherford would be, we're talking about before and after school care run by us, not talking about, we're doing it. But this would be that zero to five, which is not even under the mandate of a school district yet, but certainly on our site. And then you'll see Cedar previously applied for, but unfortunately, we weren't successful last year. Good news is we have quite a backlog still of projects that we continue to to do and and deliver. I know Sea View is partially at Sea View, partially at Woodlands as we speak. And then so and then the other ideas is if we get a new Davis Road, we would look to to integrate childcare facility in that in that site as well. Site acquisition, this is a little change from last year based off our numbers. We know Pleasant Valley with the growth in that particular neighborhood, very successful change to the metro area that has attracted additional development. Departure Bay, just it's still still on the radar, although much mitigated by the decision of to open Rutherford and change the the boundaries there. Chase River, you'll see Sandstone is just starting to to get its wheels in motion. So we don't need anything immediately, but at some point. Bayview, again, example of strategic, I guess you call it brown site infill. So you've got a brown field, previously built area that's now going to be infilling. And hopefully there'll be kids going with that infill and it's such a tiny site, we could never do anything further with it. And so great to make strategic acquisitions as they become available. And then Dover Bay area, it says Dover Bay area because really Dover Bay, you know, we don't, we wouldn't look to 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 make the the school's got enough space to expand. We wouldn't want to make a bigger site. We might have to look at something in the west if if Lanceville ever expands significantly. Expansion, Pleasant Valley, number one, Dover, number two. I know we just opened an expansion, but heavy growth and heavy demand, Forest Park and Fairview. And then you'll see replacement. So importantly, we have officially moved N D out of our seismic program request and solely into our replacement program. And the reason this is important is because typically what the ministry does is if they approve you for a seismic, they say the seismic costs, you know, fifty million dollars, but a new school costs sixty million dollars. You pay the difference district. In this case, we're saying no. All of the systems that are going to be not functioning at N D plus the seismic mean replacement is the one that we go for. The ministry is generally supportive of the ask, whether the the money is there, but they understand where we're coming from on that request, similar to Chase River. And then you'll see seismic integration program. Finally, Gabriel is there. Departure Bay, again, we're really hoping we can get Departure Bay to to solve some of the accessibility issues at the same time. We have more asks, but generally there's not a lot of money to go in the pot, so getting one is a huge success. So motion is there. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any questions for for Mark at this time or Pete? If appropriate. Don't see any. I'll give another second that I can ask for someone if they'd like to read the motion as presented. Leanne.
Right. That the Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number Sixty Eight and Anima Lady Smith, in accordance with provisions under section one forty two, parentheses four of the School Act, approve the proposed major capital plan for the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven as provided for submission to the Ministry of Infrastructure and the Ministry of Education and Childcare Capital Branch.
Thank you, Leanne. Do we have a seconder? Thank you, Leanne. Do we have a seconder? We need a seconder. Thank you, Chantel. Leanne, would you like to motivate your motion?
Yeah, just to acknowledge the work um that the team has done putting this together. Um it all seems very straightforward, but of course, we're in a um condition now where the province um is having to to strategically prioritize where they're spending their money. And I'm hoping that in the next budget cycle, education becomes a further priority because um as you can see by this list, we definitely need it and uh I think that uh that says enough.
Thank you, Leanne. Does anyone else have any comments on the motion on the floor before we call the motion? Naomi says that she agrees. Leanne. Okay, I'm going to call the motion. Does anyone oppose to the motion? Please indicate it in the chat. And if we don't see any opposed votes, then we will consider it carried unanimously. And it looks and it appears to be the case. Okay, so I'll I will, I will say that that passed uh the past unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mark and Pete. And I think that's it for uh presentations and topics for this evening. Um we're on to number nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Correspondence referred from the regular board meeting, unfinished business, new business for information. Do we got any of that for this evening? I put them on one spot so we can go quickly. Seeing none, I just have one small for information that M L A George Anderson and his legislative team locally here uh for Nanimal Lanceville um will be putting together in the summertime a public and free movie night. It will be held sometime this summer. Date to be announced, so keep your eyes open. There is a major grocery sponsor providing refreshments. So stay tuned. If you're looking for something for your kids or your family in the summer, uh that's coming up and it's going to be a big blow up screen on a big field somewhere in the nice warm summer. So look forward for that and keep your eyes open for that. Karen, do we have any questions before we wrap up this evening?
No questions.
No questions, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, motion to adjourn by Chantel. Do we have a seconder? Otherwise, we're here all night, folks. Seconded by Greg and Tanya. Anyone opposed to adjourning? If not, then I wish everyone a happy, safe summer. For those of us not going to be at the board meeting at the end of the month on the twenty seventh. Okay. Motion to adjourn is passed. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night, Mark. Thank you. Good night.